But what he did tell me was they're having a very rough time with things. They have not paid their MNO contribution for their pension in two years. And he anticipates that they don't know how to repay the next three years. So he said, they actually look at us as how are we doing it? And he said that they're not sure what they're going to do. And he said, so they're in dire straits. He said, the only reason that they're going to do anything with PSC is because they feel that they have a low income basis along with a lot of elderly and they don't feel that they're going to collect.
Mr. Burrow? They've been acting on already.
No, it's not your problem.
No, not Mr. Burrow.
Oh, I called Burrow, did you? Okay.
No, he said that they're thinking of it. He said, he said they have the LSC. I was supposed to get a letter from our auditor stating everything that I just said to you. And he has not done that yet, but he said that he was going to send me a letter.
Is he trying here tonight, Tim? Or no?
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Call to order, the special meeting of Borough Council for the Borough of Morrisville for Thursday, November 4th, 2021. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Virginia, am I? Is she doing the record?
Yes, Virginia, am I?
Okay. Virginia, you want to do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Bella? Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Law?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
And Mr. Yeager?
Here.
And the Borough Manager. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
Okay. Is anyone from the public which to speak? All right, we're going to move on to four A, which is a discussion of the two proposed preliminary budgets, option A and option B, for the 2022 fiscal year.
What I had provided all of the groups- As an example, I just provided the October 2021 Public Works Department report, and that basically has a lot of the hours as to which departments they've been putting hours into. And that was some of the basis that I had utilized. We already have one public work salary totally in water. So I just wanted to let you know that, again, that we did rework the percentages prior to providing the budgets to council at the last budget meetings. And I had rearranged them to where I felt comfortable with the reports that we get. So if the auditor were to ask to see these, it would work out in coincidence.
So if I may, I think you're still, there's still a communication issue there because I wasn't talking about the percentages, I was talking about the millage rate within those funds. If you increase the millage rate and you leave the percentage the same, it makes more money available in that, in that fund for those activities. Doesn't change the percentage of time they're working, right? It changes the amount of money in that fund that's available.
But if our needs don't match what's available, if there's more available-
You're talking about cutting one public works, right?
Correct.
So the need is there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but the percentages don't work out that way. I see what you're saying. So you're saying that, I see what, I now, I see what you're saying. So you're saying to increase each area-
Right.
-in those other funds?
Yes.
But then he would not be in the general fund at all?
That's not necessarily so.
Okay.
You say that, it's not an all or nothing thing. It, it, it could free up some of the money in the, in the general fund, right? But it doesn't necessarily mean that none of what they do comes out of the general fund.
So we would need money in the general fund, though, to fund that? That's what I'm trying to say. We would need some money in there.
Right. Sure. So I, I don't want to dwell on this because it's, it's kind of pointless to dwell on it. I put it out there. I just, it, it's clear that it, it's, it's not, what I proposed, it wasn't actually done, but that's okay. But I just want to make sure that, that that's understood. That's not, I didn't propose changing the percentages. I proposed changing the millage rate in those funds where there's available millage to utilize to get services done.
I understand what you're saying. And I, I changed the percentages-
Right.
-so more would be coming out of those funds. But I changed them to-
The existing millage rate.
To, for the existing millage rate, along with the hours and the work that we present that we do.
Understood. And it's, it's an estimate, right? Because you can't say for sure exactly where that might-
Exactly.
So, so some of this is a basis for what the plan would be. So maybe the plan could change a little bit for some of those functions. And some of the plan could be that some of those people, although they still need some of it coming out of there, could do more work on the parks, could do more work on the, on the streetlights, could do more, because that's what that all is, right? So I'm not suggesting we do anything wrong or illegal. I'm, I'm suggesting we look to shift our efforts for what people are doing to align with what we're capable of paying out of. As opposed to continuing to push it back into the, into the general fund when, when they could be outdoing other items. That's kind of what I'm, what I'm saying. Because at the end of the day, that's what the plan should be if we don't have the money available in the, in the general fund to cover those things that they're doing.
And I understand what you're saying. And I did take money and hours out of, and I call it percentages because that's what we, we use.
Sure.
I took percentages out of the general fund budget and put it over into those other, other areas. That's what I originally did to make things work the way they did so we didn't have to cut even further.
Good.
That's how I was able to do that.
In what draft did you do that?
Both drafts.
Which, which?
A and B. It's, it's the same in A and B.
Draft one, two, three? Which, which draft of the budget?
I believe it was three. It may have been two and three, but I believe it was three.
So why don't we have a recap summarizing all the changes? For instance, we, we received $75,000 more from the MMA. I don't know where that $75,000 went. You're moving money and I, I can't see where you're moving money. Do we have a one cheater explaining what you're doing with this budget from draft to draft?
No, I do not. I'm moving it to where I know that it needs to be. The $75,000 was incorporated in, in the budget because we were already at a loss and we needed those funds. We were already at an estimated $717,000. So, so that's why you're, you're not seeing a lot of this. And, and what happens is percentages from, again, we use percentages. So a percentage of everyone's salary comes out of that 75%. So basically, all the raises that are unionized and contract wise, that all came out of there. Healthcare benefits, all of that had come out of there. Anywhere that we had to increase due to, due to budgetary increases with raises and union, et cetera, and the cost of living, that was all absorbed. That's in there.
So, so I'm looking at draft two. On the rec fund, you had projected expenses of 360. On this most current one, it's 383. So you're telling me that only $20,000 of all our, our public works is in the rec fund?
No, I'm telling you that we added that.
Right, that the only $20,000 to do all the recreational cutting of grass, et cetera?
But it's an increase. It's not only 20,000, it's an increase of 20,000.
Well, if you moved the millage, as Mike had suggested, then it would be more than 20,000.
No, because each department gets a piece of that. Every department gets a percentage.
And she didn't change the millage, she just changed the percentage of, of people's salaries that are coming out of it.
But why not increase this, the millage and put more salaries in there? Because more than $20,000 of, of our public works is spent on the rec fund.
Because you can't, because you can advise by the auditor not to.
How many, how many more meetings are we going to have on this budget? Because, listen, I want to say something. I'm on vacation this week and I was having a really good vacation and I'm not having a good vacation tonight. This is ridiculous. I don't know, this, this A and this B, okay, have been around for a while. I, I don't know what the difference between this B today is and this B last week was and this A was and this A last week, okay? Nobody wants to have an EIT, all right? There's people working in this town that don't want to have an EIT, okay? I planned for my retirement, okay? I'm not going to need the EIT when I'm old. I don't know what's in here. Judith, she, you have, she has been asking you for an Excel sheet for a couple days now. She hasn't gotten it, so we could look at this a little bit further, okay? Number one. Number two, Judith, I don't really, I don't know how you're running your office, I don't know how this place is being run, but there is no way in hell we're laying off a police officer. There's no way in hell we're laying off a public works director and that office stays the same downstairs. I don't care how much help you need. I don't care. We're going to have meetings next week, right? We haven't more meetings with this? I'm, I'm-
Sit down and behave yourself. You're acting like an idiot. No, you are. Sit down and behave yourself or leave.
All right, all right.
Good, go.
Stop.
Go, we don't need you.
If that's what you're going to do, walk out. I'm walking out. Walk out. Walk out. What's the difference between tonight and last week? Nothing. There's not one answer. Where, what's the difference? You're out of control. You're out of-
There are differences. You're out of order. You're wasting our time. Get out of here.
May I make a statement, Mr. President?
Yeah, good. Sit down, take a seat. Maybe you'll learn something for a change.
You need to, you need to-
Are you going to threaten me? You want to, you want to hit me? Come on, come on.
Now, point of, point of order, point of order.
You're an idiot. You're an idiot.
This meeting is adjourned. All right? We're done.
No.
We're done.
You can't adjourn it.
We can.
I want to have my, I want to have my say.
We're putting it in recess until I pull it back.
You can do recess.
We're in recess. Please shut the video off, we're in recess.
Yeah. This is ridiculous.
There are differences.
I mean, I made the mistake of letting other people talk first, but I haven't had a chance to have my, to say my piece. We'll come back from recess when everybody calms down.
They're not going to calm down.
Why not? He's gone. That's his answer, to walk out. I was curious to hear how he was going to propose to be able to keep the policemen and the public works people and have no earned income tax. We're going to fudge numbers from, and put them in the non-general fund side so that we can somehow, through the back door, siphon them out and pay for the cops.
That's, that's what I heard. And that's what I don't understand.
You're manager, you're manager who everybody voted for and we, we put our trust in her, we're now starting to second guess and doubt her. She has no agenda. How many miles do you live away from here?
Too many.
All right. There is no agenda on her part for an EIT for not.
It's even worse than that, Ted. She's getting blamed for the fact that we have this deficit.
Exactly. She's getting yelled at at the races here and told to do an Excel sheet by somebody who does not direct the manager to do an Excel sheet. We all have to, we all have to do it. If she wanted it done, it should have been sit-
And they need to be granted permission to speak. We're not going back into that chaos. I'm meeting, I run it, and I run it as I see fit. You're recognized or you're out of order. All right, we're back from a short recess. The manager wishes to speak, so. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. I was asked to create two budgets, one with cuts, one without cuts. That's exactly what I did. The office is in dire need of every resource that we possibly could have. It's been behind. I've said this at every meeting. So when it said, what am I doing with my office? I'm barely getting by every day. I'm here in the morning. I was here last night till quarter of three in the morning. That's totally unacceptable. I'm doing these things to try to do what is needed for Morrisville Borough. I'm insulted. I'm extremely upset. I'm frustrated. I am only providing you the information that I have and that I can provide you with. And I'm utilizing the tools and resources I have, which are not many. As I said before, we have cuts with Public Works. We have cuts in the office. We have cuts in the library staff. There's cuts in every aspect of the borough along with issues such as the roof. We have tiles missing. We have water on the floor. We're trying to get that rectified. Every day, there's a fire that needs to be put out in the office. Every day, because of things that have just surmounted to the top. And now it's a volcano overflowing. And we're taking every single day, and we're dealing with it. And we're crossing at least one item off the list a day. We're accomplishing things as a team, all of us. And I think it's important for people to hear that. Because this isn't all about whatever the rumors are. There's no fat here. There's no fun that anyone's having or downstairs in the office or on the Public Works Department. Day-to-day items are getting accomplished, and we're all working together diligently. I don't have any other tools or suggestions than what we're providing. And my contract states that council members should go through the president. And I'm trying desperately to give you all whatever you ask for, whether it be help with complaints or any of those items. But a working document is not something that should be, especially our budget. It should not be given out. If you hired me to do the job that I'm trying to do for you, and you had faith that I could accomplish this, and you don't believe me as to what I'm providing you, then we need to sit down and talk about that. Because I'm at an impasse. If you feel that I'm not doing the job that you hired me to do, then we really have to have a conversation. Because I'm working night and day, trying desperately to accommodate what you're looking for. But I will not, not listen to our auditor. I will not do things that he says we should not do just because another municipality is doing that. I will not do those things. If that's what you want done, then council will need to do that. I will not do that. But again, what you have before you is the Budget A and B. I provided you with some information as to my speaking to the Bristol Borough manager. You have that information. I spoke with other managers regarding their budgets and how they're doing things. And as I said, I did rework a lot of items. And I'm not saying that we can't continue to talk about what we could possibly do. But as Councilwoman Paul just said, we're, we're barking up a tree here, looking for things that we really don't have. When we keep cutting and cutting and cutting in other areas, we have nothing left to work with. And that's where we're at. I mean, just for me to come into the borough since August, the middle of August, look at the budget and cut $200,000 right off the top was a huge feat, leaving $300,000 left. That was a lot of work to do that in this little bit of time and having an understanding as to what needs to be done. Okay, here, we can take this from here, but you're going to have to sacrifice. But you can only do so much. You just can't keep cutting and cutting. We need our resources. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm very disheartened. I'm disappointed. Because when I interviewed with all of you, I asked you how you would want me to deal with things. And I was told, the way that I am, that you wanted me to present things to you. You wanted me to be the strong manager I am, give you the suggestions, talk about things. That's what we've been doing. I, I don't, I don't believe that there's any other way to go about communicating other than what I have done. I've, I've communicated constantly. And if, if council can't believe what the manager's doing with these budgets and questions every single move, it's impossible for me to continue to work this way. It's impossible. And I'm, I'm asking for all of you to please come together as a whole and as a team, as we're trying to do with all the departments here in this municipality, and come up with solutions, not, not what we had tonight. Because it, this just isn't working. Thank you all. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Parker, may I speak?
Go ahead, sir.
You know, first of all, I want to apologize to our Borough Manager on behalf of everybody for, I think, a lot of unjustified criticism that she's been hit with over the last couple of weeks. She's, she's exactly right. She did exactly what we asked her to do. We said we needed help. We needed help, especially in the budget. We needed to have a balanced budget. We weren't happy with maybe the way things have been done up to this point. And so she undertook to give us a balanced budget. And be careful what you ask for, because it's not a very, it's not for the faint of heart. And she prepared two budgets, because we had already voted on the EIT issue. And I acknowledge, as I did at one of the last budget meetings, that we lost. Those of us who advocated the EIT, which we thought was really absolutely imperative, we took a vote on it, we lost. And, okay, so then the president and I, we said, okay, we lost. But we asked the Borough Manager, along with anyone else who was at the budget meeting, prepare an austerity budget. Prepare, the EIT is gone, so let's see what it looks like without the EIT. Do the best you can. She did the best she could. Unfortunately, that meant lopping off at least two full-time police officers and a full-time Public Works person, on top of making all kinds of cuts up and down the budget. It wasn't just zeroed in on personnel. As I said, she, she cut out the fire suppression system for this building. A new roof or a repair that works for this building. All kinds of other absolute essentials to get us down to 300,000, to a $318,000 deficit. But that wasn't enough. And after that, there's nowhere to, there's nowhere to go. I, I read the, the chief's memo on what the impact might be of this, of this budget deficit, which we got on the day of the last meeting. And I'm not comfortable, I'm not, I won't accept a budget that leaves us with one full-time officer to cover our streets, our homes, our parks, our businesses. That's untenable. Every day, we're going to have one officer on duty? I don't think that, that works. At, at, at one of the last budget meetings, Mr. Robinson had commented that, well, I can't vote on, for EIT, because I promised my constituents I would never adopt an EIT. Well, when I campaigned for this office, my number one priority was, I was advocating a full, bringing the police force back to full strength to ensure the safety and health and, and, and protection of the community. That, I thought, was the, that, to me, was the highest, the number one priority. The priority right after that, interestingly enough, was that we should have a rigorous, you know, and balanced budget. But that still doesn't take precedent over the fact that we need to have safe streets. So we can, we can, we can, we can line up all of our campaign promises and see who promised what. But all I know is where we sit right now. You know, even though we, the EIT has been voted down, and even though we can't adopt a budget with an EIT unless we were to reopen it, and only those that oppose the EIT can reopen it, and I, and I believe that none of those are going to step forward tonight, certainly Mr. Robinson isn't going to. We're stuck. And I don't know what happens. But I'm not, I will not vote for any budget that, that is, is based on austerity that leads to laying off 20% of our active police officers and 20% of our Public Works Department. Untenable, unacceptable. You know, and, and as far as the EIT is concerned, well, I won't argue that the merits are demerits. I'll save that for another time if it ever comes back up. But that's where I stand. So, so the idea that we can sit here and, and torture the Borough Manager by going through every line item and, and making sure that she really did squeeze every piece of, every ounce of fat and blood out of it, and that we're at the bare minimum, you know, we've got nowhere to go. We're not going to, we're not going to make up a $300,000 deficit by chopping off a few hundred dollars or a few thousand dollars from here and there throughout the budget. You can just eyeball, you can eyeball her draft budgets and just look for any, any column with at least four or five digits before you can even make an indent. And, and I challenge you, I don't think anybody out there in the public can come up with a reasonable scheme that, that will save us $300,000. However, we know that if we pass the EIT next, tomorrow, that we, we're going to get at least $293,000 back. Because that's what we're already, our citizens are already paying out to other municipalities. We're going to enforce municipalities in this county. And yet, it's okay for the citizens to pay their EIT to other towns as long as we don't add any more payers here. That just doesn't make any sense to me. We could plug that gap tomorrow if, if we were, if we were to adopt it. And we could then build back some other things in the budget that have long gone untended to. But, but I don't see, I don't see how we're going to do that. I don't, I don't propose that there's a way to that. Right now, I just see an impasse, and I see tragically, everybody, you know, turning to our Borough Manager as the scapegoat. And that's just ludicrous. That's all I have to say for now.
Mr. Parker, may I?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. So I want to focus just for a second on the things we can agree on. I think we could all agree, we want eight officers. We want two officers 24/7, as the chief has been saying for years, is what this town needs. The adjustments that were made to the police force in the, in the past, removed the SRO, it removed a specific truck enforcement officer, but it left us in a position where we had two officers 24/7. I don't think anyone up here is suggesting that that shouldn't be the case. We can also agree that, yes, the EIT was voted on, it was voted down, which leaves us with, without a plan for what we've directed, which is no EIT and eight officers. Now, I know that's a difficult thing to talk about, because it's cuts to other people and creates other issues. But that's, that's the plan I haven't seen. That's what, that's what the council has voted on. That, that's, that's, that's what we've agreed on. I think we've all agreed that eight officers is, is, is a good number for the town, including the chief. So I'm just, I guess, I'm not sure why there's, there's not an option that encompasses the directive of, the specific directive of council. And I'm not picking on anybody. I'm not mad, this isn't emotional for me. But, but I will say that, that, and this is going to make people groan, but the minute you, you start saying that you're going to cut police officers in any town, it's an uprising, and it shouldn't happen. And, and I'm pro-police. That said, if, if we keep saying that's our only option, it becomes emotional extortion. Because if, if that's truly the only place that it can happen, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to incite those emotions. And that's where I still kind of have a problem, where we, we don't have an option that cuts other services or break or reduces other services and brings in third parties to, to, to manage some of those items. And I know that's, that's an argument you guys don't want to have right now. But again, I want to focus on the things we agree on. We agree that, that we should have eight officers. And we agree that we should not have any IT, because it was voted down. So the, to, to Mr. Paul's point, where do we go from there?
That's, that's, I think that's the point. And I think, instead of just throwing out, well, we need to look in other places, she's looking for what, you have, you need to be specific. This isn't the time. Tell me what you would want to cut.
We have, uh, let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six people listed in Public Works. We have, uh, let's see here.
That's not, that's the manning table you're looking at?
Manning table, I'm looking at.
But that's not how we budget.
But that's what, that's what it's pushing into, that's the numbers we're using for the budget, correct?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Yager, which budget are you looking at that you have in front of you from this evening?
No problem. B.
B. So if you go to B...
Can I ask just one question?
Yes.
If we closed the library and sold the building, what would it save us?
Not much.
Could we get a number on that by the next meeting? And what are, what are? Well, if you lay somebody off in the office, it's, it's the last person in. So that would be one, one office worker. It wouldn't be anybody else.
There was a question as to that. Because if it would be the last person in...
Well, if it's, if it's a unionized person, yes.
Unionized person. That, that's what the question would be.
If we laid somebody off, we laid somebody off in the office, and that was the last person in, what would that save us in salary? We, could we?
Off the top of my head, uh, most 50, 60, 70, 80. About $86,000 approximately.
So it doesn't get us to 300.
No, no, one, one change doesn't. You're right.
And I'm not sure what the particulars are regarding the library. Does the building have something in the deed regarding a sale? Is there any particulars? Are we, are we able to do that? I don't know if there's any legalities that restrict us.
Do we have any idea if anyone actually would want to buy it? I mean, that's, that's a problem.
What would it save us? Then I guess the question would be, leave that off the table, since it's not, it's not going to happen.
The library is funded by a library fund.
Yeah.
So it's not even really affecting the general too much.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. What are you going to do with that three and a half mils? Where are you going to move that around to? Because it's not in the general fund anyway.
And, and that's what I was going to say next. If, getting rid of the library is not going to help us, because it's not going to fulfill the general fund.
No.
Unless you were able to sell the building, if you were. But until you were able to do something like that, we still have a budget that we have to...
And then what are you going to do when you don't have another building to sell?
Exactly.
Selling a building wouldn't fix anything. That's a one-year stopgap.
It wouldn't be our, it wouldn't be our problem anymore. That's what I mean. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be owned by the borough. We wouldn't be doing maintenance. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't have Public Works maintaining it. That would be a savings there. It would take some pressure off of, of the few people we have left.
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
In looking at both A and B, there are some figures that, I know that, that you're being very conservative with the figures. And, but even being conservative, these are still, like, for instance, your, our cable. According to this, we're not expecting to get, only expecting to get, what, $65,000 by the end of the year? But yet, we're budgeting 87. So even, so, and that's in both, that's both in A and B. That is not specific to one or the other. So my point I'm trying to make is, even being conservative, adding a little bit in hopes that maybe we get that little bit, it still brings us way below where we need to be.
And, and fines. Mr. Yager had, I'm sorry, Nancy, are you...
No, nothing. I was just, the things that are highlighted, the fines, the, the code enforcement is, is really very, very high. That's a quarter of a million dollars.
Huge. Maybe we need to look for another firm. Maybe it's...
I'm already doing that. But until, until I can accomplish some of the things that are needed to be done with other firms, other costs, we still have, we still have a timeline that we must accomplish a budget.
Right, so the figures have to be in there, right?
Yes, yes. And there's a lot more to this. If, you know, next year, we can look at other things. We can look at how we could possibly do things differently. We can look at other costs. We're at a, a timeline, unfortunately, now. I don't disagree on looking at other subcontractors, looking at other things. But we, it takes time. And with, without having enough staff to begin with, and me working all the hours I am, I can only get so much done at a time. But there's, it's, it's...
Mr. Parker?
It's a struggle.
This is a question, I don't really have the answer. One of the reasons I'm, I'm guessing that Judith is working so many hours is because there is no overtime. She's offering no overtime for anybody.
No, I have, I'm still allowing...
What you need.
What, for minutes and certain, only the necessities. Just for things that have a timeline that have to get done. So everyone knows that, no, there's, there's, there's no other, no other overtime unless, or comp time, if we want to call it that, they have the option. No, I've, I've told everyone.
Right, which, which means that you have to do more. That's all I'm mentioning. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
I'd like to know, since the subject of third-party vendors, where, where would we, where would we look to use third-party vendors?
I think that we talked about possibly grass-cutting. That would be an idea.
But you couldn't do that with a reduction.
Well, that's the other question. Unionized.
Right, you have unfair labor.
Right, so I'm, I'm unsure of that yet. But I was going to look into that, if, if that was something that council wanted.
It can only be done, and I've experienced that firsthand, only to alleviate the stress on, on, you know, on the workers that are there. It can't be used to replace or lay off anybody.
Mr. Parker, speaking of grass-cutting, there were, you know, for a number of years, we would have summer help that would do it. That didn't interfere with the, the unionized contract. But no one came forward this year. There was nobody. We didn't have anybody.
We have had ads for part-time employees. Since I arrived in August, we immediately put up, you know, job ads, and, and we have had no one apply.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who would want to work here when you have to worry whether or not somebody's taking a picture of you wiping your brow and drinking some water. It's brutal. Taking a break. It's just a brutal, and it's, it's, it's everybody, it's public, it's everything. It's just, I, I wouldn't blame anybody for not wanting to work here.
And I, I do have an item that I do have to bring up, and I was going to send an email... and I was going to send an email and I didn't get a chance to. And I'm going to ask Mr. Leder if he'll touch upon that. But I wanted to answer Mr. Jaeger's question first. It's in regards to, Mr. Leder, it's in regards to the facility with the leaves. I was unable to send an email and I was hoping you could just touch upon that then in a little while, if you don't mind. Thank you. Council President, if you don't mind, I bring that up. But if you go to Budget A and B that we supplied you with this evening, there were some discrepancies at the last meeting that were pointed out with the wage data sheet.
Okay.
And the current data sheet that you have now, on the very back, what it's showing you is Budget A. If you go down to the Police Department, you now see you have two corporals and you have six full-time officers. That's what we currently have. If you go to Budget B, the draft, you see we have two corporals and we'd be going down to four full-time officers. It's the same thing for the Public Works Department. At this point, we have a superintendent, a crew leader. We would be going down to one special equipment officer, operator, I'm sorry. And if you looked, we kept a lot of these things in here, but if you look all the way to the right of the 2022, the new rates, if you see zeros in there or you see a reduction in cost, that's what we did because.
One mechanic.
Yes.
Got it.
So, I'm sorry, one mechanic.
And then the one operator that you just said.
So it's hard for me to.
Both numbers are adding up to the same.
So the laborer is a zero, yes, and one mechanic, yes. And there would only be one equipment operator.
Okay.
So we would be down.
Five, not six.
Yes, we'd be down to five, not six. So if you look to the right, those are the new, we didn't want to take out what you had. And actually, we couldn't take it out because it's what you currently have.
Right, right, right.
So I think, does that help?
But, yeah, I mean, that's, so really, it was just that I counted down the one side and the one laborer is still there instead of being zeroed out. That's the only difference. Everything else I said, so it was not six, it was five. Yeah, got it.
Thank you. So I hope that was helpful. Mr. Leder, could you please touch upon the dilemma we're having?
So every year, we have, we open that leaf dump for residents to drop off leaves on the weekends. We have somebody man that six hours a day, Saturday and Sunday. The gentleman that did it for us can't do it. He was injured. He's not going to be able to do it this year. So now I'm stuck. Who do I have to do it? I can put it out there. We need somebody to do it. Unless you want to pay my guys overtime. And I don't think that my guys, I'll be honest with you, don't think they're going to want to work. You know, they work all week and then they're going to work a Saturday and a Sunday, too. I mean, you know, money, everything, it's not about the money with these guys. So I don't know what our options are this year. Not open the leaf dump. I hate to do that because I know the residents, you know, it helps. It helps them, you know, get their yards cleaned and stuff like that. We come up with some kind, someone has a suggestion of what we can do, but it's, it's four to five weeks. It really depends on the weather is why I say four to five weeks. And it's six hours a day, 12 hours a weekend. So, you know, if anybody has any suggestions or knows anybody that would like to go down there and, you know, I don't, I'm not going to say what we pay. I mean, it's obviously, it's public knowledge. I just don't know how much, what the pay rate is. So if we can get that out to the public.
Is that something we could ask the MEAC if they'd be interested in volunteering for? Because that sounds like it might be something right up their alley. Otherwise, people are going to throw them in the trash.
By the way, I'm sorry, let me finish. I forgot the fact that we have to have somebody if we do open it. We can't open and not have anybody down there because.
All kinds of stuff will be done.
Concrete, everything gets dumped down there. We have that problem even now. I opened it up during the day while we're there this time of year and we're down there picking out branches and concrete. We just don't have a way to watch it all the time.
Mr. Parker, can I ask him a question? What's required, like what kind of activities required? Because I was actually thinking possibly the Boy Scouts with their leader in getting some sort of badge or something.
It's just a matter of taking down people's names that come down the dump, their address, contractors, if it's a contractor, what property he was working at, writing it down. And then I take that following that Monday and look and make sure that it's all. But, you know, the guy that was there before knows everybody. So it's on the, you know, getting outside.
It's a matter of recording who comes in.
That's it.
So you don't get some, you know.
And monitoring, monitoring that it's only leaves, it's not garbage and so forth. And not that we couldn't put an ad out there or look ourselves for personnel. We could try to do that, but I felt it imperative to come to all of you because of some of these ideas that you did propose. And I really wanted to hear from all of you as to, maybe you have other ideas of supporting this, as you had notated, MEADC. I think that's a wonderful, MEAC, I'm sorry. And Boy Scouts, wonderful ideas. And that's what I was looking for. So thank you all.
And even that would fall in line with the part-time labor.
Correct.
And I don't think the two entities that we just mentioned would be receiving any pay. So, and if that's okay, you know, legally and all of that, I just think we should, we could look into that. I could call the leader.
That would be wonderful.
The MEAC, I don't, I mean, I think that's a good idea, too. I don't know how much time they have.
Sure, we just, again, we would need them to, you know, monitor and log and so forth and communicate with us. And I do not see this as a union issue. Our guys don't want the hours. So it's not something of that nature. I think we would be fine, you know, doing something of this kind.
What are the hours?
They're nine to three.
Nine to three? Rain or shine, snow or shine?
It's raining or not, no, it's raining.
I'm just asking, I don't know.
Whatever weather.
Okay. Well, while we're talking leaves, I'd like to make this public service announcement to ask people, please don't put them in the street. I see big piles of them, people actually blowing them into the street and just leaving them there.
All right, thank you, Nancy.
So Nancy, let me clarify. You will check with the Boy Scouts and.
If Justin doesn't, I will. It doesn't matter, either or.
I don't, who's the president of it now? You're in charge.
Mary horrenda.
What's that?
I believe it's Mary horrenda.
No, I don't think so. No. It's, the woman lives on Delmore, Delaware, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't think of her name.
Can I make a suggestion?
Elaine, Elaine.
Elaine Henley?
Yes, thank you.
Instead of having it open on the weekends, how about if we open it like from 7:30 to 8:30, Monday through Friday?
That would be even more difficult to man.
And it's dark out, 6 o'clock.
Saturdays and Sundays are when people, that's when they do their cleaning. So, I mean, it's up to council how you want to do that, but I don't see that being, helping us really in any way. So they said, we open it up around 7:00, 7:00. Then we open it at 7:00 and we're done at 3:00. So we have someone to lock it up during the week. They said, I don't think many people are going to come out and clean their yard or bring it after work. So, but again, that's up to council what they want to do.
I think it's going to be hard to man it.
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that if we're having struggles with what they can do during the week, adding another tour during the, I don't think that is going to help.
I think the suggestion was, you know, somebody to volunteer. But at this point, I think it'd be even hard pressed to get somebody to volunteer for Saturday and a Sunday. But I think it would be best, in my opinion, to stick to just the weekend. But, all right.
May I add, I'm also going to, I'm not going to leave the Girl Scouts out. I'll give them a call, too.
All right, let's get back to the budget. Where were we?
Thank you all.
Nowhere.
I don't know if there's any more questions from council.
Mr. President, I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
And probably questions. Code enforcement wise, have we looked at cutting back hours for code enforcement? I know it's not going to get us $200,000, but in the scheme of things, it could be a reduction.
Right, well, currently, they're only billing us for work done. And with the amount of complaints and the amount of issues that we're dealing with right now, we can't keep up.
I get that, but if we're looking to pass a budget with eight officers and no EIT, then council needs to be made aware of, here's your cut, here's what's cut, here's what's going to happen. And I think that would be our choice whether we're not. And I understand it's a difficult thing and you're going to get yelled at more, we're going to get yelled at more.
If they're billing us for.
Code enforcement, actual code enforcement, walking around enforcing the codes is about the only thing that we lose money on, no matter what. The other permit issues should be recouping costs because they're user fees. And if they're not, my next, going to roll into my next question, are we going to revisit the fees that people are paying to make sure that it's covering the costs?
Yes, we are. And I've already began reviewing some of the fees because you will have that before you at the November meeting. You will need to adopt that fee schedule. That is, I will not have a full-blown evaluation of that yet. But next year, I have a plan to put in place to revisit all of that because what I would like to see is the cost being an in-and-out cost that we can help our budget with exactly what you're saying, with some of these items. Because I don't believe that it is in line. And I, again, that is another area that next year we need to look at.
And that process did take place about three and a half years ago, but to your point, three and a half, it's time to do it again.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, too, though, because I believe it needs to be done. And I know there were some fire marshal fees that were adopted recently and I've revisited that already and that must be changed. And I'm going to be proposing that to council in November. That's an easy fix and I already know what the numbers are. So, and again, I guess what I really need to say is if you fully feel that you want to cut somewhere else, you need to, council as a whole needs to make a decision and say, Judith, we wanted, we decided that we want to cut with code enforcement. But then we need to say this publicly because when we get these phone calls, which we're getting right now between emails, phone calls, I've got three messages in the past just three hours about certain items that, again, they want to talk to the manager. You know, they want to know why we're not able to get certain things done. And so, and they want these things rectified. They, you know, they don't want to hear that we don't have the resources to do it. They don't want to hear it. So on my behalf and the staff's behalf, we have to come up with something to say other than, well, we don't have the manpower to do this. You know, we have to come up with something that we all agree on as council and the manager, that I can relay to the staff, that this is what we want to do, if it's what you want to do as a whole. Again, you know, I work for you. If you want to reduce code, you need to all agree on that. You need to tell me. We'll run the numbers. But I don't feel that by taking away from the things that we have now, I don't feel that that's a viable option because we're already scrambling to get things accomplished. And your quality of life in the town is, you're going to see much of a difference if we do these certain things. And I think right now, we're really, really making progress with code. I'm hoping that next year will be a much better year of continual, again, reviewing the fees, trying to get things maneuvered the way they need to, having processes and procedures working better. We're working on all of that in the office with the code department. We're doing all those things. So if we continue to crunch that and take more and more away, we're just really going backwards again and we're not really accomplishing anything. But again, you, if you all feel that that's what you want, you know, I will certainly do that. I just need to say what I have to say because I think that Morrisville needs what we're providing code-wise. I really do. And if we don't continue, and I have to say this, if we don't continue with the code issues and those items, the quality of life just goes down for Morrisville. It's not an inviting place to live. We're now going to have vacancies. We're not going to have the incoming residents that we need to make us survive in our budget to begin with. So I think we have to be very careful where we cut and what we do so we don't make Morrisville a less desirable place to live, work, and play. And, I mean, I'm not happy with any cuts, but obviously, when I cut $200,000 right off the top, you know, we're already, and I think that's what I'm trying to say, we're already crunching.
I don't think anybody's saying we aren't.
I know.
I understand that.
I know, I'm just.
And I will say that to counterpoint your part about being undesirable without code, the flip side of that is with an EIT, we're going to make ourselves undesirable in another way that may lead to vacancies and people leaving and, you know. Bob, I have the floor here. Please. So as you said, I'm making suggestions where we can cut. It's up to council whether they want to agree with me, not agree with me. Go that way. I will say I do have a final comment, one that you'll like much more because it brings in more revenue. I've mentioned it at the last meeting. I'm going to mention again, a local services tax is an option that I would be willing to go for. I crunched some numbers and my best guesstimate is it would bring in about $200,000 a year.
And that was going to be a question that I was going to ask. Did anyone get any information as to what we could collect from an LST?
I didn't get any information, but what I did was took what we had from Keystone of about 3,600 taxpayers or tax filers that paid the EIT and assumed most of them, the large majority of them would also pay in local services tax here. And then added on about 500 people additional for people that don't live in a borough. And you have 3,500 taxpayers. We have 8,000 residents. There's going to be somewhere in between there that live here and would pay and in addition to people that just would work in the borough.
Were you calculating the $52?
Yes.
$52, so how many did you, how many?
Well, 3,600.
I had about 3,600 times 52, plus about 500 times 52.
500 people that work here but don't live here.
Yeah.
So that was 187,000 plus the 500 people.
So you had 4,100 people is what you were calculating total. 36 plus 500?
Yes.
Okay, times $52.
Yeah, and to be conservative, I assumed 80% of that 3,600, just to have a low ball, so it's about 150 grand, plus about another 50 grand. You subtract off maybe 3% of collection fee, puts you right around 200,000.
Is that collected in-house?
I assume that would be done probably by Keystone or somebody similar.
By Keystone or someone similar, thank you. Now, and I assumed that this was a suggestion prior. I know it was on the list that I gave all of you. So as to, did you want that, you know, were you interested in that? But I wasn't sure if you had any thought process in that manner.
No, I mean, I would be more willing to do that than an EIT. I just think $52 is easier for, it's $2 of a pay period, I believe, for somebody to pay, a dollar pay period if you have 20s.
Then, sorry to interrupt you. Are you done?
No, it's a dollar or two per pay period for 52 weeks to bring in $200,000 as opposed to 1% of somebody's salary. So $2 a week, you know, 1% of a $100,000 salary could be $1,000 extra tax. It's almost double somebody's municipal tax. Or for somebody making $40,000 a year, it's $400. And this is still much less than that. And it brings in a good chunk.
It's an option.
Mr. Parker?
One second.
Okay.
So what do we do next year when the MMA begins to throttle back what they give us and we're left with anywhere from 200 to $400,000 in a deficit? What do we do then? It's going to happen.
You'll have a new council and you can vote for an EIT again.
This is about just maintaining your line. Well, okay, understood.
If I may?
No, I'm still have the floor.
Okay.
So, I'm okay with that. I'm fine with it. And we'll just save the cuts for next year, because I'm never going to vote for an EIT now, because I don't want to pay that money. I'm going to be selfish. I wasn't selfish before, because it's a new tax for me. I was willing to pay it to keep the services we have, but next year, I won't be for it. Maybe I'll be outvoted, maybe I'll win some over. Why should we be the bad guys to do the EIT when we knew it three years ago? How many years ago is it now? Three years that Mr. Mitchell was mentioning this, and we ignored him, because it wasn't palatable? New Hope has a local service tax and an EIT.
I'm not going to sit through this nonsense. If you're going to play that same game, Ted, you have fun.
Is that your pen, Mike?
No, thank you. Yeah, I don't want to leave my jabbering my pen. But if you're going to play this game, Mr. Parker, you're no better than Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good night.
Would you just put your letter in for resignation now?
I don't do that.
Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Parker.
But you do walk out.
Yes, I do.
Have a good night, have a good night.
Well, we still have a quorum. Well, I have a question, Mr. Parker. So, the emergency service tax, the $52 one, we would be adding that to the no E, the, what is it, B, with the no EIT, is that correct?
That's what I would assume, yes.
And it gives us $200,000, and then you get to keep...
I got 213, I don't...
Yeah, it was 213.
And again, do we have any, how long it takes for that to fund?
Yes, that's on...
It might not help us, we might end up with, we might end up with a million-dollar deficit next year if it doesn't start to fund.
We also must use a certain percentage of that towards emergency services.
In fact, I thought it was almost all of it.
Yes, it is.
It's very high, it's a high...
And it could go towards the police.
Towards the police, yes. No, I just want to make note that it would, it would need to go towards the police.
So, the five of us are left, what do the five of us want to do? Y'all want to leave? Want to stay?
Me too, I'm going to leave too in a second.
Well...
I'm not wasting my evening, I worked 12 frigging hours today.
Okay, point of order, can I say something about the budget?
I don't think it's point of order, I think you just asked...
Well, I mean, we're going off on a tangent, just, all of us are just winding, and I have a budget question.
I haven't given you the floor yet, just, I haven't finished yet. Mr. Yeager walked out, when I was pointing out the fact that the prior manager has been telling us, since he walked in the door, that we have to look at another option, and it was ignored. And I honestly don't believe it's for concern of the residents, because I think they would understand that we're doing this to keep the police fully funded, to be able to plow the streets when it snows, to take care of the properties, so that they don't fall apart. But it is what it is. You have the floor, ma'am.
So I'm looking at the police budget, and can you tell me, it says that this is year-to-date, what's it say is the column heading?
Which budget are you looking at?
I'm only looking at the one without the EIT.
We wouldn't know that unless you told us.
When it says year-to-date revenue expense, can you tell me through what time period that is?
That's expense, I'm sorry, could you give me a number of what you're, the number that you're looking at?
The column that you have titled, year-to-date revenue expense, can you tell me through what time period that is?
That is up till September of 2021.
Okay, so I'm looking at the police budget, and some of these numbers, I don't know if they're plugs, they just don't make sense to me. Our extra part-time police, and I know it's nickel and diming, but when you nickel and dime, it will add up. Extra part-time police is up $10,000. Our crossing guards are up $2,000. Is it possible to get rid of the police clerical? Our miscellaneous, it went from being $3,000 to $10,000, what is that? Police overtime for special events went from $7,500 to 15. What special events are being anticipated, and is there something we can do about that, or is that entirely reimbursed?
Could we take one line item at a time, so I could answer?
Sure, oh, I was just making notes.
I have, I just have a question, real quick. Who's in favor of a local service tax?
Guess?
I would be in favor.
So, we have, we have a consensus on a local service tax, so anticipate that.
But we don't, there's two people we don't know.
They walked out. They gave up that right to decide.
Well, you're absolutely right, I'm sorry. But I'm not sure that, and so, that would be with Plan B, with no EIT, is that it? So we're putting, we're putting this $52 in?
The EIT is off the table completely, it's not coming back, it's gone. So, B, everybody just run it through the shredder.
Okay, so if we're doing B, and we're absolutely not doing EIT, then I guess I will...
B is without the EIT, Ted?
Whatever, you knew what I meant.
Yes.
Mr. Parker, I don't know if you're still taking comments, or where we stand.
We're trying to figure out what we're doing at a quarter to eight.
Okay, well, while you're figuring that, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I oppose this local services tax, I know nothing, I know that Justin crunched numbers based on lots of assumptions that are even more speculative than an EIT. The EIT, we know, we know people are paying $293,000 today to municipalities outside of this one. We know that. We know how much money we're going to get from that. And that money will go, would go a long way. Anything else, we're just, all we're doing is we're trying to placate these people who insist on not having EIT. I'm not playing that game, okay? So I said earlier, I'm thinking, I'm voting no on anything, and it's really pathetic the way that we're trying to find little tiny little pieces, just to try to assuage some concept that, oh, no income tax. Have you, I wonder if we ask the people who pay that income tax currently in Morrisville, if they would prefer if the money stayed in Morrisville, or they'd rather go out of town? Have we ever asked that question?
Not of everybody, but I could tell you, the people that I know have no problem with it.
Mr. Parker, we've had one person...
No problem with it going out of town, or going back to town?
No, there's only one person that stated he didn't want it to come back here, and that's Mr. Yeager.
Anyway, that's all I said, I'm not, so, work out a budget, but like everybody else who's walking out or whatever, I'm not walking out, but I am going to tell you right now, I'm voting no on any of these other budgets. It's just, it's just untenable. It leaves, it leaves this community at risk.
What it leaves, Bob, is it leaves us forced to reopen it in January, to do what needs to be done, that nobody wants to make any suggestions or movements on. We want to pull dollars and nickels and pennies from this line item and that line item, to do the smoke and mirrors that have been done in this budget for about 40 to 50 years now. And that's what it is. They're forcing us to do something in January, and that's what it is. Bottom line.
Mr. Parker, if we had, I'm only going to make one statement about the EIT, guys, I know it's dead, but it's hard to not talk about it. If we had the EIT, we would actually be able to hire a truck enforcement officer. We would be able to train and bring someone back, if we had the EIT.
Not with these budgets that are proposed, because in the very beginning, we only know that you would be getting a certain amount of money back.
Eventually.
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 Sorry.
And then, we're also, we also have the same problem with both the local service tax and the EIT, is those individuals who don't work in the borough, don't work in this, you know, in the state, or don't, you know, or we aren't, like, my company's not going to take out a dollar a week, so I'm going to have to self-pay that, I'm going to have to track it, self-pay it. How can we guarantee that everybody else is going to do that? So you're not looking at a true 200 and whatever thousand dollars it is, it will be much less than that.
It could be.
We honestly can't base a budget for next year on numbers, and Bob's right, we can't base a budget on numbers that we don't have a firm handle on. At least at this point, in EIT, you know what's out there to the other municipalities, and a local service tax, you don't.
It would be a guesstimate for an LST.
A guesstimate.
If you're going to guesstimate, I would guesstimate 100,000 tops.
That's about what I'd think.
So, was your, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, was your suggestion to Judith to make a new budget and incorporate that, 200,000, or just to find someplace that we've cut and just add the 200,000 back in?
I don't think you can, because honestly, I don't...
Well, I agree, but I just didn't, I want to, I want to be clear about what we're...
This is something that should have been done before we got to this point.
Yes.
But now, we're trying, we're grasping at straws and trying to plug a hole with, again, imaginary numbers. We don't have any facts behind it.
Kathy!
We're, how many weeks away from needing a final budget? Six weeks?
Yes, not even that, no, I'm sorry, not even that, I'm sorry.
Now, we want to, you know, we want to bet on things that we have no guarantee as to what they're going to turn out. And then, we're next year, September, October, November, we're looking at lord knows what in a deficit.
Okay, all right, can I, Mr. Parker? So, leaving this building tonight, I'm going to guess that we are going to be, we need to give some direction to our borough manager, because it has to be advertised, we have to move forward. So is this council saying, okay, please go forward, we're doing B, that's the only one that has the majority, move forward, with B?
If I could make a suggestion, I would recommend having her try to get firm numbers on an LST, best guess, which is not going to be the full amount. And then at our next meeting, which if it's, when is it, next Tuesday? Because I won't be here, I have a contract negotiation, so I won't be here.
It'll be, it'll be Wednesday, it'll be Wednesday, and I wanted to ask for an announcement for that, because we'll, we'll be having an executive session at 5:30 next Wednesday. The executive session, if it goes past 6:30, we just wanted everyone in the public to know that we would be having our budget meeting later. We were going to post that on our social media sites, to let everyone know that if we're in executive session yet, we will, we will resume back into the public afterwards. Yes, it may be a little later. But if I may, I did contact, when I was looking at the paperwork regarding the EIT and all the options that were on that paperwork, which I had provided to everyone, I did contact Keystone, asking them if they could provide me with any numbers regarding this, and they told me that they had no information to be able to do that. So I just wanted to say that, that's what they had told me.
The LST.
Yes, for the LST. So I was exploring all these other items on those sheets, other than the EIT, because I was thinking on the same lines, well, maybe we could do this, or maybe we could do that. But they told me that they were unable to provide me with any information, because they don't have those numbers. So, I'm unsure as to, you know, I know you came up with your calculation, Justin, I was trying to do the same thing, I kind of, I'm not sure how I feel about 4,100, because it's half of our, half of our population, and I kind of worry that a lot of those could be children, I'm not really sure.
3,800 is households.
3,800 is households.
Has nothing to do with population.
Yes, people who work, yes, yes. So that's what my concern is with the numbers, I'm just not sure that we're, not to doubt you, I just don't know that if we're accurate, I'm not sure how we find out.
Listen, as of three days ago, we had no number, now I provided one for to put out there, if somebody can prove me different, then it's great. I'd rather have an, the more accurate number we get, the better information we have to make a decision.
No, and I thank you for that.
So that being said...
So, that's all there is, at this point is, is see if we can get a more firm number on, on how much revenue, firm number, because we need to base the budget on it.
And she'll plug it into different locations, where we might have cut a little bit?
Still going to have a deficit, but maybe it's one officer instead of two.
So if you took that, we have 8, 8,900 residents, 9,000. 22% are children, 23% are senior citizens. So that's a little, not quite half, so that's 4,500. Then you have an unemployment rate in Morrisville of 4.1%. I'm sorry, just bear with me. That's 4,320 people that probably are working, so that number is close to what Justin had said, in a different manner.
What about, what? What about, what about the households where there's only one income earner?
Okay, so...
We can't, and, no disrespect, Helen, at all, but we can't go, I mean, it's not our place to project this, this is what Keystone is supposed to be doing for us. And we need, we need numbers that we can actually back to and say, I get it, I understand.
I understand, but they gave us a 300,000 number, they should be able to tell us how many...
Based on that, I believe, I believe they should, but I would rather have it come from that.
Right, but so how many people is that, $300,000 for the EIT, how many people is that?
They were just using the numbers on those based on those who are already paying it out.
Right, and do we know what, how many people that is?
Right here, right now.
It could be very varied, somebody might be paying quite a bit of money into that, because it's based on their income, so...
Then, what if they work in a municipality that already has an LST, do they get double taxed, or?
No, no.
But you can't tax them?
No. Because I already pay, I already pay that.
Right, because a lot of the municipalities around here have, I mean, Falls has one, I believe Lower Make has one, Newtown Township has one.
So are you, can...
Mr. Barlow has one.
Well, I have an email that, from Keystone, I asked twice for numbers, and they told me that they could not provide me with those numbers. I've asked.
Can we just be a little bit more quieter in the audience, please?
Can you, if I'm hearing you right, if they, say they pay in Falls, we can't take that money, Falls gets to keep it, is that what you're saying? The LST?
The LST.
Yeah.
If they're, I'm unsure.
Okay.
I'm unsure, because it's where you work.
Right, it's for the, it's for the local services, you know, of where you work or where you reside.
Right, which is opposite of the EIT. Okay, so we probably won't get, so that's another factor, unfortunately.
Have that confirmed one way or the other.
Okay.
And I was told by Keystone that they don't have any data to pull from for that type of tax, because I was, you know, I wanted to be able to present something to you when I was going through the list.
Where would you go for that?
For even the possibility of funding this to even 200,000.
Correct, it just depends, yes.
I mean, it doesn't start on day one.
So, Mr. Parker, do you, do you want a motion to pass this?
I still think, I still think it's something we need to look into. Whether or not it helps us, this budget, I don't know.
Right.
I think it's, I think, we can't walk out of here and not have them pursue it any, a little further, even if it's just a confirmation of what the manager already was told, but at least we need...
I'll provide you with the emails.
Okay. But are we, are we having another budget session with a different budget?
We have a budget.
You have, the schedule was placed in the previous drop.
Correct, but how is this going to change? If, if we already know we're only working off of B, and not going back, and A is out of, off the table...
Nothing is off the table, but it's, you've gotten a clear no, so...
But we're going to come back the next meeting and be at the same place, is what I'm asking. Nothing's going to, numbers aren't going to change, nothing's going to change. We'll find out, we'll find out possibly a closer number about the local service tax.
What we can do when we come back, is we can start cutting office staff, along with the police, and then leave our manager with no personnel to manage the borough, and then we decide from there what we're going to do next. Because right now, we're laying off the people that we are, and we, you know, we still have a deficit. So we have to lay off more, and we're still going to have, I can, I can tell you right now, what... now what salaries we're looking at, and it's not going to bring us to the 200, $300,000 that we need. So do we go deeper? Do we leave our manager there by herself? What do we do? But I don't know what else to do. And I'm, I'm tired, and I want to go home, and I'm either going to, we're going to adjourn this and come back next week, or I'm going to walk out myself, and then you have no quorum.